So I'll go ahead and make a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye. Shannon?
Aye. Reynolds?
Aye. Lota?
Aye. Listra.
So, um, I got a dog here with me. Hopefully she's not making too much. But, um, I think she doesn't like meetings. But anyway, um, they, there's some confusion as to whether the meeting was starting at six thirty or seven. Uh, but it was currently shown on the website is seven P M. And I believe that's what the applicants were told at the meeting last week. So we're trying to stick to seven o'clock. Um, the, we had three on the agenda. Which were seventy-two State Street, um, twenty-four Monroe Avenue and forty-two Monroe Avenue. Um, so in developments since the last meeting, I just want to summarize them a little bit. Um, seventy-two State Street, um, has submitted an application for an area of variance. For their garage and that is, I believe, going to be scheduled to be heard on, um, October eighteenth at our regular meeting. And, um, we also will get to this, but I believe a twenty-four Monroe Avenue had just submitted an updated drawing. Showing their sewer pipe. And I don't know if that was received in time for people to get that or not. Um, but I'd at least like to talk about what we're doing with that application. Um, let's first start with, um, seventy-two State Street that was on the agenda. And I see applicant, um, is present here. My, um, my thinking on this is, um, I would prefer to go ahead and, um, resolve this at our next meeting on the eighteenth. Um, I believe that we resolve both the site plan and area variance at the meeting. Is there any other opinions?
Shannon's asking to speak.
Yep, go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I understand and I think that's fine to, um, go over both on the eighteenth. I just want to make sure the, the, the last meeting, there weren't updated plans in front of you and the plans that are attached to today's agenda are the oldest plans that, the very first ones. So I just want to make sure. Um, and I guess I will make sure with Steve prior to that meeting. You guys have the most current plans. I handed a packet out last week because of that, but, um, I'm seeing that what you're seeing today is not current at all.
I have, I have a copy of the updated.
Justin, you're muted.
Okay, thank you. It looked to me, I just looked at the website, uh, tonight and it looks like both versions are on the website. You have the old version is on there and then later in the packet, the updated ones are on there. So I think we'll try to get that sorted out for next meeting.
Very good.
But, um, just to confirm, the garage is still eighteen feet wide, correct? Is that the intent?
The intent is eighteen, correct?
Okay, uh, so as long as, uh, so we'll make sure to put eighteen foot wide ends on the agenda and remove the others. Is there a particular date for the plans that we should specifically be considering?
Uh, I know after the last meeting, the architect sent over a, an updated set. So that may have been, uh, if I'm looking at the calendar. I think, uh, well, it was sometime last week, maybe the twenty-third or twenty-fourth. Where it had the drainage, uh, outlined, it had everything you had asked for, a little more outlined.
Okay.
Uh, with the, with the setback being three to five feet, um, based on the, what the, uh, the tree experts say.
Um, so just so we understand, are you asking for us to, um, for a little bit of flexibility in the exact location of that? We have done that in the past. Uh, sometimes applicants want to, um, be able to have a little, uh, option to handle conditions when they start construction. Um, I personally don't have a concern whether it's three feet or five feet, as long as it complies with code. And it's not causing problems to your, your neighbors. It sounded like you're trying to work out the situation with the neighbors already.
Yeah, our, my neighbor's been super supportive and helpful. We, we just have a common tree that we want to make sure that we take into consideration. Um, you know, that's why we sort of put the three, two, five foot setback just to accommodate whatever the tree experts might say is best for the the tree.
Okay, we, I think we can put that as a condition of approval in there that, um, have a, to allow you to modify the setbacks, um, in that range.
Fantastic.
Does anyone, does anyone else have any additional comments regarding seventy-two State?
This Dave Marshall, I do not.
Okay, so Dave, you just joined maybe a couple of minutes late, but, um, I believe, uh, at least my recommendation would be that we resolve, uh, both the variance and the site plan at the meeting on the eighteenth.
I concur.
Um, maybe I do have one last question for you, Shannon. I heard that you're trying to get everything lined up so a contractor can start, um, about the end of October. And you, uh, it might be helpful if you just explained what your situation is, so we understand.
Uh, yes, I spoke to him the other day. I think, you know, originally we were hoping things would go smoothly this month. Um, based on the information, we didn't need a variance, but now that we do, we know that things are going to be pushed back. Um, so everybody's just sort of on hold. Um, you know, I'd, I'd like to get things started as soon as we can before winter. Um, so we're just, we're just waiting for all this to, for all your input and approvals.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for being patient. I know the, um, there's some debate about what to do with the code and the variance. And unfortunately, we have some situations where, um, we have to work with our code. We have to follow all the laws. Um, the code may not always make sense as it's written. Um, that's why variances were created so that it makes sense to, uh, waive them. And I can't tell you right now, uh, what we're going to do with that application because we, it's not before us tonight. But I just want to point out that that's why variance exists, so we can handle peculiarities in code, uh, where it makes sense.
I completely totally respect that.
So, um, anyway, uh, so with that said, unless anyone else has anything else to say, I'll, I would like to make a motion to, um, continue discussion on seventy-two State Street at our next regular meeting on October eighteenth.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Doesn't sound like it. Um, okay, let's just, let's just call for a vote then. Um, I'll vote aye.
Lota, aye.
Dave Marshall, aye.
Shannon, aye.
Reynolds, aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Shannon, we will see you on the eighteenth.
Great, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Um, so, uh, Dave, I think you joined in, um, a couple of minutes late. Um, I got a message from John Catura shortly before the meeting that he would not be attending. So Mike Reynolds is acting as a full member tonight.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so the next application, um, let's jump to, um, I guess the question is, uh, what would people like to get to first, uh, twenty-four Monroe, which is the addition, or forty-two Monroe, which is the garage addition? Indifferent?
Is anybody here for either of them that might want to go first or?
Both applicants are here.
Um, all right, let's, um, I would like to start maybe with twenty-four Monroe Avenue. Yeah, um, that's all right with everybody. And, um, I would just appreciate an update from the applicants as to where they stand with that. Um, so last time we talked to them, uh, we wanted to get some updated documentation on the sewer pipe. And I'd appreciate hearing from the applicant as to where that stands. Um, do we have the ability to promote the applicant to speak?
Is it Chris or is it Kristen?
Kristen Rohrpa.
Justin, there's a chat message, um, from Chris Costanza saying that both of them are here.
Chris Costanza.
And Kristen says that Chris Costanza has more information.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Chris, I can hear you.
Hi, how are you? So we were able to get a, uh, a civil engineer to go out and measure, um, both the depth of the sewer and then the location of it relative to the new addition. And what they found is that the sewer is further away than what we had thought and deeper. Um, so they did not see any issue with doing the foundation. Um, they said that the bottom of the foundation will be at least five feet above the top of the drain. Um, and then it's six feet away or six point three feet away. Um, before we thought it was four feet away and it's actually an actual two feet away. So for the most part, the sewer runs underneath the large tree that we are air spading around to try to save. So, um, they did not see any issues with it. Um, I had sent to, uh, the town, a map stamped from the civil engineer showing all this. As well as a letter from the civil engineer, um, saying that, uh, you know, where the bottom of the footer would be, the elevations of the inverts. Um, as well as, you know, the, the idea of using an air spading and, um, just protecting the tree roots. Which we're trying to do, you know, that the goal is to, um, air spade around the tree roots. Those tree roots can be, um, cut and grafted back into the main trunk if necessary. And then, uh, you know, not, not, not get any further, um, towards the trunk of the tree, which is basically, um, at this point, protecting that drain line.
Okay, um, just for clarity, is, uh, do you, are there any more documentation you intend to submit or is what you've sent, uh, your updated drawings, is that, uh, what you intend to respond with?
Um, we, I don't know what other information we could submit. We, we, we gave you a civil engineer stamped plan showing the location of the new addition, um, with dimensions on it, um, horizontal dimensions. And then also a letter from the engineer stating the vertical dimensions away. As well as our proposed method of construction that it would be fine for the drain line. Is there any other information that you would need?
Um, well, right now I was just looking for clarification as to whether anything more was forthcoming, but I see Steve raising his hands. Steve?
Yeah, I just want to say that email from Chris was forwarded to all the board members. So everybody should have that information. And there are hard copies in the office of the updated plans with that sewer on. Um, and Joanne has one of them, I believe.
Yeah, okay, maybe I can ask for a little bit of clarification from both of you, Chris and Steve. Um, the, uh, you said the sewer pipe was found to be eleven feet deep, which is deeper than your foundation. What, what is, what is the foundation and the footer plan? How far down are you planning to dig for that? And what is the footer width?
Forty-two inches. Sorry, go ahead, Chris, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's just basic code. All, all footers in New York State are forty-two inches down as for the frost line. Um, you know, that were, the, the footer, the width of the footer will be two feet wide. Uh, so it'll be a two foot wide, one foot thick footer. The top of the footer will be, um, you know, thirty inches below grade. And then we're going to start the stem wall on top of that. So, you know, typically when you're excavating down, you try not to disturb any of the soil below your footer. So that way, um, you, your footer goes on top of undisturbed soil. If you dig too far, um, then you have soil that you need to compact or fill up, but flow will fill in that cost, that's more expensive. So typically when they're excavating, they put on a blade, that's no, a blade that doesn't have the teeth on it, so they can get a nice, um, smooth cut on the bottom edge. And then your footer starts from that point.
Okay, so, um, so I guess the basic thing is you are not doing a full basement underneath there. You're only going down the forty-two inches.
There was never a full basement. Yeah, it's, it's just a slab on grade. It's, it's, it's a garage.
Okay, well, you had the garage and the house addition. Um, but anyway, thank you for the clarification on that. Um, Steve, did you want to add anything else, um, about that construction and about the findings?
No, I, I think they're plenty far away. They're actually farther than what was originally thought, a little deeper than what was originally thought. I don't believe that there's any issue with them as far as the sewer goes.
Okay, um, all right, thank you, Steve, for your, um, input here.
Just, I could add the rest of the house is a slab, so the rest of our house, we don't have a basement, anyway.
Okay, th- thank you for the clarification. I think that's, that's very helpful, um, uh, to, to understand. So, I guess we need to discuss where we want to go with this. I know the drawings just came in yesterday. And, uh, I believe, and I don't think everyone's had a chance to look at this yet. Um, I would, um, maintenance, sewer maintenance is certainly not my area of expertise. And, um, my thinking on this is, I would appreciate, uh, getting some input from the trustees who do oversee the maintenance of the village infrastructure. And see if they have any thoughts on this. So so my thinking is, uh, I think it may make sense to ask them for comments and receive them. And if they're okay with it, then we can move forward with this. Uh, at least that's my personal opinion. I see you have a couple of hands raised. Um, but let me first hear from other, uh, board members and then we'll get to Steve, then we'll get to the applicant. Um, any, any board members have any thoughts on this? Nothing, okay. Um, let's go for Steve. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, this was, this was, I talked with Scott Harder in regard to this. He left it up to Zach. Zach is the DPW head and control of the sewer system. He has zero issue with this. The trustees have no knowledge of the sewer system or the maintenance of it. Zach does. Zach is the head of DPW. He gave it his stamp of approval. I truly see no need that this needs to go before the trustees for sewer issue. When myself, Scott has looked at it and Zach has, has put his stamp of approval on it.
Yeah, um, let's hear from the applicant.
Um, this isn't, that, first of all, this isn't a sewer. Um, it's a storm drain. Um, which, which has a lot of, um, less restrictions to storm drains and sewers. Um, the other issue is that, no, we, we, we submitted all the drawings. Um, the owner paid seven hundred fifty dollars to rush a civil engineer over there to get all this information for you this week. They're trying to build the, the garage this year before winter. Um, and I don't see why there would be need for a delay. Um, you know, the county has looked at it, the town has looked at it. We've had civil engineers get all the information you've asked for. I, I would like you to, you know, vote on this and approve it. Say that, that's what I was hoping for.
Okay, this is, uh, Dave Marshall. Um, I just have a question about fifty years from now. And I know this isn't the applicant's, uh, concern per se, but, uh, right now we have no easement. So should the property as currently planned be built? Um, and we grant the variance tonight as the applicant's requesting. How does that shake out? Like, what happens when something does go wrong eventually and a storm drain needs to be, uh, worked on? Uh, what is the concern there? Is it possible to, uh, get an easement? Is it possible to, uh, plan for that unfortunate circumstance where something does go wrong and we're, uh, we basically are tasked with, uh, fixing, right, the pipe? Um, but add additional cost because it's within or a smaller, uh, distance, right?
Um, yeah, I guess maybe, um, can ask our attorney, uh, Ms. Ogland to comment on easements. Uh, we don't get exposed to them very often. Um, do you have any thoughts on easements?
Sure, yeah, thank you, Justin. In a perfect world, um, the village would have negotiated a written recordable easement with the property owner before placing a municipal storm sewer beneath the ground on the property owner's property. And typically what happens is that the easement would give the, would describe the rights that the village has to access the top of the property in order to repair what's underneath the village property that's underneath the, um, the surface. Uh, I, I don't know whether that's happened here. Um, I, I don't have, um, you know, we don't have an abstract of title. I don't know whether there's any recorded easement there. I mean, if there were an easement, it would describe the village's responsibilities with respect to, uh, repairing any damage to the surface of the property, uh, that, that would take place in connection with the maintenance of, you know, any routine maintenance of the storm sewer. So, I mean, right now it's all guesswork. I mean, in, in typically these things are, are things that are supposed to happen before, um, village property is placed under the ground of a, a village resident. Um, it would be, I mean, it's, it's in everybody's best interest to have an easement, so everybody's on the same page as to what the rights and responsibilities of each of the owners are. You know, one of the other issues that's, that, you know, that comes up very frequently in cases like this. Um, if, if the easement, if there is no recorded easement, um, putting, uh, future property owners or this property owner on notice as to where the underground storm sewer is, then you run the risk that, um, somebody is going to construct something on top of this storm sewer accidentally. Um, and that can be a big hassle for the property owner and for the village if there is a repair that necessitates going underground. So, um, you know, this may be an opportunity for the village to either, um, you know, identify the sewer interested, that easement interested has in this property. Or to make sure that the village and the property owner are on the same page as to what the various rights and responsibilities of each is with respect to both the underground, uh, sewer and what activities can be, can take place above ground in the vicinity of the sewer.
Mindy, can you expand upon the, um, property owner's liability in the unfortunate circumstance that something goes wrong with the pipe directly underneath the construction that just occurred?
You know, if the property owner doesn't know about it and something happens and the property owner has no control or ownership over the storm sewer, then, you know, the, I think the biggest risk to the property owner is that there could be a, um, some type of breach of the, or damage to the underground storm sewer that, um, infiltrates the subsurface soils and could potentially impact, um, any nearby structures that are on top of the property.
So to continue.
You know, how, I, I, it's, is it likely? I don't know.
Right.
I think that the bigger issue really is, um, putting everybody on notice as to where this thing is and what can be done in its vicinity, so you don't have this issue again. And that somebody doesn't accidentally construct something on top of it or so close to it that something else, I mean, not necessarily this, but, you know, something else that could make any, um, reasonable repair of the storm sewer difficult or expensive.
I see Steve's hand up, um, before I comment, maybe.
Yeah, I just want to say, right now, you're, they, what they're proposing is roughly six inches closer than what exists today. It's not going on top of anything. You would have purview down the road. This board would always have purview on any other addition or structure that could possibly go over there. You now have a certified plan that shows exactly where that sewer is. So there's no mistaking in the future where it is because you have a plan on record. You aren't creating an, a, any more of a difficulty than exists today for the repair of that sewer than already exists today.
Steve, um, just because it's on record in the village hall doesn't mean that a subsequent property owner is going to be on notice that, you know, the location of this particular thing. I mean, that's why we have reported easements. You know, so that it gets recorded in the county clerk's office and everybody's on the same page about where it is and how these things happen. You know, something that's on file in the village hall and under a building permit application or, um, you know, a site plan approval isn't going to be, likely is not going to be ever seen by a subsequent owner.
Yeah, okay, so I'm just thinking about this a little bit. I think we have a couple possible issues here to at least think about. It sounds, um, at least based on the testimony from Steve, that, um, and, and given the depth of this, that it may be possible to construct this, um, and, and in a way that won't interfere with the sewer, assuming it's properly constructed. Um, long-term maintenance is still a question. And that's my big concern here. And I don't believe the, uh, mayor or trustees have had, um, any opportunity to give us input as to what they want to do with this. Um, Steve said that the, uh, Public Works Superintendent thinks that this is maintainable. Um, we haven't received any testimony from him. And we just had these drawings come in yesterday. Um, I think I would feel a little better, at least giving, having a little more opportunity for some input. What period of time that should be, um, I don't know, but I think more than a day would be reasonable. Um, I think an outstanding question is, uh, does the village want to pursue an easement with the property owner? And I don't, maybe Mindy, you can comment on that. Can we legally require that or is that purely a discretionary matter?
You can, I don't think that you can require it because it's something that is a voluntary agreement between the two parties. I mean, it's typically negotiated between the village and the property owner. I mean, it may be, you know, one of the things that may be appropriate here is for you to consider the site plan. And then, you know, perhaps make a referral to the trustee saying that in connection with referring, the, reviewing the site plan, it appeared that there was no recorded easement. Um, we've received documents from both the civil engineer and from the, you know, and, and a statement from the DPW saying that this particular construction is not going to negatively impact the existing storm sewer system, but, um, you know, we would refer this to the trustees for review and comment. And, you know, perhaps you may want to reach out to the property owner and negotiate an easement with respect to the maintenance of the storm sewer.
Okay, um, thank you, Mindy. Um, yes, Chris?
Um, well, one of the things that, you know, with, with a sewer or, you know, storm drain like this, this is a, a pretty inexpensive pipe in the ground. Um, it's not a twelve inch gas main. Um, you know, it's, it's really not, it's not a big cost to repair these things or move these, dig them up if you have to. I mean, it's, it's an inexpensive pipe. It's about as inexpensive as you get. Um, there's no asphalt pavement over the top of, you know, the area that we're talking about is grass, so just soil repair. Um, so I don't really see it as being like a huge issue that we're making it out to be. Um, as far as an easement goes, As far as an easement goes, you know, the existing storm drain right now is three point five feet away from the existing foundation of the house.
So there is no easement right now, correct?
Correct. There, there, there's, there's no easement. And I think that if you were to, and not only that, so the uphill manhole is about twenty feet away from the property line. And at the location that we're talking about, this sewer is about fifty feet from the property line. So the uphill manhole is actually close to the property line. And then this, this sewer drain, it ends, or, you know, it ends up going basically into the middle of their property. I think that if you were to get an easement in the future or work something out with the owners and this had to be, this pipe had to be replaced at some point in the future, fifty years from now. My guess is that they'd probably go from the existing manhole that is, you know, fifty feet away from the house. And they would run that, a new storm drain along the property line. So that way you can have a ten-foot wide easement, you know, and you can go, you know, down the property line and not have, not have something that's right next to, you know, an existing structure. Right now, to get an easement in that area, this, it wouldn't be feasible because the existing structure is three, three feet away from the pipe. So I, I think then in the future, fifty years from now, my guess is that, that pipe will be moved from the uphill manhole and it'll run along the property line if need be.
So, Chris, that's a unique consideration, which is the idea that the easement is not to the current pipe, but to a potential future site of the pipe. So what you're suggesting is that should something fifty years from now go wrong and, and a current property owner at the time not be aware of this municipal pipe going underneath. If contractually, when they purchased the property, they were aware of an easement that existed on the property line, it wouldn't have an adverse effect in any way on the potential future property buyer, right? And so the idea, again, just to go back to Justin, maybe your comment, which is it would be really nice to have an easement for the municipality to know that there's some potential, should something go awry, that rather than go and try to dig three feet or six feet from the construction or the current abode, but rather there's this easement that circumvents all those issues. That would be really wonderful, right, for the municipality to have, as well for the property owner to know that in moving towards an easement and potentially be, I wouldn't say conditional. I, I, I'm not quite sure on the legality of that. But the, the idea that there's an easement somewhere set away on the property line to do exactly what you just said. And I, I guess I might like to just hear from Kristin, her thoughts on that comment.
I, I'm sure Eric and I would be open for that, you know? I mean, to have an easement where it is right now would be much more difficult. To have it on the side, in the grass, away from the property. I'm, I'm sure Eric, you know, Eric isn't here tonight, but I'm sure he would be open to that as well. You know, the fact that we're not building over this thing. You know, it is a, a, a drain to the canal. I spoke with the canal people last week because I wanted to talk to them about our doc. And he's like, oh, I see, I, you have your prop, you know, that you have work being done. We're all cool with it. They weren't concerned about this either. You know, we have had, we paid like a thousand dollars to have this pipe scanned with the robot going down it to make sure everything is okay. It is okay. If something were to happen to that, we would fix it. We would not want to have a pipe leaking on our property. It would cause damage to the trees, to the property, who knows what? I don't want to deal with that. If, if God forbid, something happens, we would fix that. It's on our property. I'm not going to just leave that and let it mess up the whole yard. You know, I, I think we have ownership of that. We, we would make, we want to make sure it's right. Anytime Zach had wanted to check out the pipe going down because there were issues on Monroe Ave, I just told him to come and just, you know, do what he needs to do. I don't have a problem if you guys need to look at that pipe and make sure everything is good.
This is where, if, if I were to think as a property owner and your comments sincerely appreciate, if there is a municipal pipe going three and six feet from your property, inasmuch as you're stating to us today that you will repair it, I think the municipality has a degree of liability of that repair. It would probably necessitate their ownership of that repair, which creates the unfortunate circumstance that they're driving in there with the trucks, dealing with the three and the six-foot setback. However, at the time of that concern, right? If they knew that they had an easement to circumvent it, it possibly could be far easier for them to address that concern and say, okay, this pipe isn't functional anymore. Let's reroute to the easement that we do have. And, and so again, I the, the tough part here is, is that the engineers are suggesting, go ahead and do it as is, where we don't have the easement. But for you as a property owner, I wouldn't want to assume that liability. And, and so it may be where, after discussion tonight on whether or not you move forward or not, you, you really should try to think about an easement, right? And that would be the referral to the, the board.
Okay. I, I, I'm, Eric and I would definitely be open to that, to, to discuss what could be done. Where could it be placed that would be the least obtrusive way down?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, where I see this is, I, I think it makes useful sense to have a discussion for, if this pipe needs to be worked on in the future, what is the maintenance agreement for that? How is that going to be done? And that's where I think there's all kinds of options ranging from nothing to moving the pipe. And I think it's useful to at least engage the trustees and see what thoughts are. And then they can discuss it with the Public Works Superintendent. For what I've heard from the applicants, there's some concern about timing of this. And they would like this project moved along.
Right. I'm, I'm just wondering if the trustees, like Steve said, if the trustees have, really don't have the technical knowledge like this, what, what are they bringing to the table that, that Steve and the DPW and the civil engineer and the Canal Corporation in Monroe County? What, what are they bringing to the table to decide that if?
Well, I think that they, they're responsible for financials of the village. And if they're going in and maintaining village infrastructure and it's on the taxpayer's dime, I, I think there's some interest there. Go ahead, Dave, you had a comment.
Mindy, I, I simply had a question in a very hypothetical. Based on the engineer's support of the project as currently designed. If the applicant were to proceed and then immediately something happens or they inappropriately build and create an error of that pipe. At that moment, is it the municipality's cost and expense?
No.
Fine.
Well, that's, that's Steve's answer.
Okay.
My answer.
Sorry, I thought I was muted.
Isn't that the same thing as, as our other sewer line that goes out towards the canal? If something happens, it's our dime to fix it. We understand that.
If you do, if, if the property owner does something to damage the infrastructure, it's the property owner's liability. And the village would first ask nicely that you pay for it. And if you didn't, the village, you know, would exercise whatever legal remedies it had to.
We already understand that.
I was responding to David's question.
No, thank you, Mindy. So I think what we're saying is, should we accept the engineer's comments? And the, again, I, I'm not an engineer. So should we accept those as it's okay, this project looks fine? But still, there's that ongoing uncertainty. But if something unfortunate happens in the development of the building of the project, it would be on the project and the homeowner to repair and fix.
I mean, if, if you're still directing the question to me, the answer is yes, you can do that. You can put in your resolution that the property owner has acknowledged and has agreed to accept responsibility in the event that there's, you know, damage or impact the storm sewer system and that you refer the matter to the trustees. And, you know, so you may want to know about this for follow-up.
Okay. And then in the subsequent comment, they do develop project. The home is expanded as currently designed. And it would potentially behoove them to get an easement elsewhere to, should repair be needed, go that route and then actually removes a lot of potential future expense of the applicant or disruption of the, the property.
Okay.
Yeah, and it probably would make the property more sellable, actually. I mean, I, I, I'm not sure how excited subsequent property owners would be to purchase a property knowing that the storm sewer is three foot from the house.
Yeah. So then, a- as I think about tonight, I, I, I think that there's a degree by which we are not as skilled as the engineers and the DPW to understand the risks associated with the project. The applicant is full aware of the risks associated with developing so closely to the stormwater pipe and that the onus is on them to make sure that it's done right. Whether or not it has to do with the blowing out of the dirt rather than the digging of the dirt, as I think a recent email suggested. But should we approve it with proximity to that pipe less than ten feet? It would be done with the idea that maybe, Kristin, that you guys move forward with removing your future liability or just disruption of having an easement, because that easement is really valuable to you. But I don't necessarily think, given the avenue of appropriation to, to move elsewhere, that we should per se hold up the project as a result.
I would appreciate that, just so we can get started for the winter or before winter starts.
Okay. So I, I've heard concern here for trying to get this moved along. When, Steve, you, when, well, Steve and Marina, first of all, when is the next meetings of the HPB?
The next meeting for HPB is scheduled on nineteenth. They do not need to hear this. It's not visible at all from the public way.
Okay, so, so they are not going to see this at all. Normally they do. Thank you for the clarification on that. So I guess a dilemma in my head here is we're hearing that construction is on the, the applicant's onus. Maintenance, future maintenance is a concern. I'm still concerned that we just received this drawing a day ago and whether we want to give at least some limited period of time for any, for people to look at this and weigh in on it. I don't even think board members have reviewed it. So what are thoughts among other board members do? Should we, do you need more time to look at this? Would you like to hear, you know, any more formal comments from anybody, from the village engineer for the Public Works Superintendent or, or any other, or trustees?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Susan.
So, has, I understand that Scott Harder has looked at this document. Is that right?
Scott Harder briefly looked at this yesterday, I believe. And I could forward his comments to Marina. Do you want to present, put them on the screen so everyone's aware of them? Are you able to do that?
I'm not sure. What, would you like me to share?
We're going to talk about this. I think that should be matter of public record and can be presented on the screen as to what. So I just forwarded you a document. So we can go ahead and if you are able to pull that up.
I don't see that, but I think for time's sake, you are able to screen share that as well. It would be a green button on the bottom row of your screen.
See if I can do that. Green button on the bottom of the screen, share screen. Okay. I'm not just permitted to do that.
Okay, hold on, I'm checking again.
It should be in your email here, hopefully shortly.
This is the email, correct?
That looks like the email, if you want to pull it up separately from all your other ones. You can just double-click on it or something, right? Did, did you delete it?
There it is.
So just so the, this is, so drawings are forwarded to the village engineer. And this is the copy of the response. He was just asked if he had any comments on them. So these were his, his initial comments here, which he stated that based on the deeper sewer pipe, like vertically, it was okay. He had some concerns about the horizontal proximity. And I guess there's only two recommendations there were to consider, he's, he said relocating a portion of the sewer would be interesting. I don't see us as, I'm not sure we're in a situation to dictate that. But then he also recommended a easement with the village going over future maintenance.
Right.
One of the reasons why I wanted to at least ask the trustees what they wanted to do is they may be completely interested in relocating the sewer to not be near the pipe, so it's more maintainable. Maybe that's a crazy idea. I don't know. But
But, excuse me, Justin?
Yes.
I mean, could, I mean, that consideration can, can take place independent of our decision tonight. That can always take place.
I, I agree, Susan, and just to Kristin as the applicant. And Chris, as you look at these considerations from the engineer, both of these are suggestive of granting an easement elsewhere for dealing with a potential future problem of that pipe along that route and ensuring that then, maybe not now. Like, I, I don't personally think that the cost should be incurred now by the applicant or by the village. But should something in maintenance be required, provided that there's an easement granted at the time? Now, again, I guess this is to Mindy. Mindy, is there any? Can one grant an approval of a project conditional upon an easement being granted?
No.
You're muted, Mindy.
No.
No, okay. So then
I think that you can recommend that the, that the Board of Trustees reach out to the property owner to negotiate an easement and consider relocating it and put the trustees in contact with Scott Harder. But, I mean, an easement is something that needs to be negotiated between two parties. So it takes two to tango. You can't make an approval like this, subject to that. And, you know, I was going through the, the, the new village code while we've been discussing this. And I don't see anything in there that instructs the planning board to consider such things in its review of a site plan application.
Right. And Justin?
Susan, please.
And also, I, I believe that the mayor and DPW are about to embark upon a survey of the village and what is needed in regard to infrastructure repair and complacent replacement. That's about to, to be launched. And this would be a terrific item, you know, to, to put on that list. I, I, I'm not convinced of the I I I'm not convinced of the 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 connectedness between our decision and this easement. I think it's, I think it's desirable for the homeowner. I think it's desirable for for the village. But now I've seen civil engineers weigh in on this. And my inclination is to kind of respect those those judgments.
I concur, Susan. Oh, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
So the weather is starting to close in. The issue, whether or not anything is done with the sewer pipe seems to be irrelevant to proceeding with the garage. The owner seems to be quite receptive and it seems to see the advantage of of having an easement agreement. And I I would, I would think that we could approve the plan with that. And I think we could leave that leave the easement and sewer issues to the owner to deal with. Partly because I've I've dealt with situations like this in construction. The the assumption of exactly how deep that pipe is and exactly where it is, that's not necessarily dependable. If it turns out to be somewhere a few feet off and they need to make adjustments, they should be free to do that. And it sounds like they're well prepared to to deal with it in good faith.
Okay, so what we've heard from our attorney is we cannot require an easement. It'd be a purely voluntary thing between the village and the applicant. So I'm still left with the question of, do we want to have anyone else look at this and give them time to look at this concerning the drawing came in a day ago? They engine, the village engineer took a brief look at it. I don't necessarily see this as any definitive statement one way or the other that it's good or bad, other than it sounds like this is a better situation than we originally thought last week. Where it's deeper and further away. So I I'm just still saying I would feel a little more comfortable with some opportunity for input either as at a time before we vote on this or as a condition of approval. Maybe I can ask that as a question for our attorney. Could we put if we were interested in acting on this quicker, could we place a condition of approval that it be reviewed by another party, either the public work superintendent or the village engineer or any other entity?
Yes, you can make a condition of approval that you receive, you know, written acknowledgement from the DPW and the village engineer that the citing of the proposed addition will not cause harm to the existing storm sewer system.
I would building permit would be granted until those those two entities have had a chance to review it.
And and approve the location, right?
Chris, you had your hand up. Did you have comment?
Yeah, I thought Scott Harder is a village engineer, and I thought that DPW already reviewed it when we had the initial application.
Steve says the public works department. I I know we've notified the public works department. I have heard nothing from them. We have had no correspondence from the public works department. All we know is we've received comments from the building inspector.
So at the last meeting last week, there there was a letter that we spoke about that came from the public's work department, did not have any comments. I thought that's what was that what was discussed last week.
Um, I believe what was discussed, we had a little bit of correspondence with them. And sorry, maybe I should revise my comments. We did get a little bit of of comments from the public works department, but I thought they're along the lines of, we don't know, we need to understand exactly where this pipe is located. And once we do, we we could be in a better position to comment. But then the building inspector has said that, well, based on, he had some different conversations that it sounded like the board was not copied on, but he has shared his take on the public works department's opinion.
Steve stands up, Justin.
Yeah, I I'm certain, I am certain. I mean, if you need it official, I'm certain I can go to Zach tomorrow. He had no issue where the pipe was located before in the original plans. We are now farther away and deeper than what we originally thought. But I am certain that tomorrow, if you make a condition that Zach would approve it, that I can get him to send an email saying maybe there's no issues with this, the location of this pipe, and that the the addition proposed will not affect the sewer pipe at all.
Okay, well, that certainly sounds like if putting a condition in there for him to approve it, if that's the way it goes, that wouldn't harm anybody.
I concur.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing then, Justin, is that with the DPW and village engineers official opinion as condition of approval, we can move forward with a vote to approve tonight?
Sounds like if that's the direction the board wants to go. Now, Steve, clarify another thing. When you issue the building permit, you're going to get more updated drawings that are going to show the plans for the foundation, correct?
The the drawings we got now are not construction drawings. They're not permit drawings. I will receive total official plans from the architect prior to issuing any permit.
Okay, though they're going to be more detailed, and I think it would make, if we put a condition of approval for the public works department and the village engineer to look at those, that would give them an opportunity to look at that and comment on that. And if they had any objections, that could be brought up as part of the building permit. It seems to me if we're, if that's, the board wants to try to move this along based on the information we have now, I would feel a heck of a lot better putting those conditions of approval on it. And if it really is not a problem, then that would allow this to move move along without really any impediment to the applicant.
That would be my preference as well.
Hmm.
Okay. So I guess the next thing we would have to do is that's that's how we're going to go through this, as we normally would go through a resolution on the project. And usually we discuss this as a group. I had, did not, we do, we do not have a draft of one. But we have our template that we normally look at. I think I would probably be satisfactory to kind of go through the the findings that are in our resolution template. And we can discuss those. Indy, do you have any comments on that?
I think that's a fine way to go.
Members of the board, are you all right with that? We discussed some findings for the site plan. Okay. So Min, so I'm gonna forward to Marina, I'm going to forward our typical resolution templates and I'll forward one that we had for the other application for was forty two. I'm awfully confused here. We have twenty four Monroe and forty two Monroe. Just give me five minutes or less than that, should be one minute. I can forward them off to you Marina, and then we can go through them as a group.
Sure.
Okay, Marina, I sent those to you. Okay, so this is going to be for twenty four Monroe. We can fill in the applicant's name and action and that stuff later. But this is a residential addition. Marina, can you scroll down a little bit? For seeker, I haven't wait, this is a residential addition, which is type two action. It was, I believe, Mindy, you can correct us if we're wrong. We can fill this in later. But I think that's six seventeen point five C eleven, which is for in addition to a residential structure. It makes it a type two action. Mindy, if you have any advice on that later.
Twelve, not eleven.
Twelve. Thank you. The next one, it was forwarded to Monroe County Planning. And based on what we've heard, they had no recommendations. So that would be item B in this list here. Just how they always respond. And then number three for whether this is a requires a waterfront consistency review. It's a secret type two action. So that would be item B, so it's not required. And then number four, no county or state agencies need to review this, to my knowledge. Is that correct, Steve?
That is correct. They actually, everybody that weighed in had no, no input. They were sent to, I believe, three or four other agencies, and they all had no comment.
Okay, so let's go for item number one here, Steve. It is your, is it your determination that the project does not create any zoning violations?
Correct.
Okay, so the next one here, item number two is a consideration for us, compatibility with the comprehensive plan and the L W R P. I don't think small residential additions really bring themselves to much consideration under either of those. Does anyone have any comments on that?
Well, especially because it can't be seen from the street from any public byway.
Or from the canal.
Right.
Okay, so the comment is basically that, what I'm hearing is the comment that the it's a residential addition and it's not visible from the street or from the canal. We can leave the comments as that. Any top, any additional comments from anybody? Or is that good?
Good.
Okay. Next one, vehicular traffic and circulation. Basically, it's an existing driveway and I, Steve, I presume it would be your opinion that there is no problems with traffic or circulation of the proposed plans. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so a comment is that it's an existing project and the building inspector has no concerns about traffic and circulation of the driveway. Next one, pedestrian and bicycle access. Again, it's a residential dwelling. I don't think these are concerned. Can just say not applicable?
Right.
That makes sense to everybody?
Good.
Okay, next one, compatibility of the proposed use to adjacent uses.
Is it, excuse me, it's an accessory residential use in a residential district.
Yeah, this is a residential use in a residential district. I believe the two neighboring properties are residential. And this is constructed, what is it? I believe it's at least fifty feet from the property line. Okay, so proposed use and adjacent uses are the same, I guess, is they're they're all residential. So we can leave it as that. Off-street parking, loading and access. Again, I think that's not applicable for a residential application.
Right.
And they have a driveway. Okay, landscaping, the site is already landscaped and they are adding additional shrubs to screen the utilities and air conditioning units.
Okay.
The next one, signage is not applicable. Okay. So the next is we have lighting, we have drainage and sewer systems. So lighting, we heard from the applicant and lighting is going to comply with code. So that is, I think we can just leave the statement to that. And the next one, drainage and stormwater. What are thoughts about this? Drainage, I believe.
Drainage, they said with one down spot going out back down the hill towards the canal. There's nothing that they're doing that affects any stormwater.
Okay, so I guess the opinion of the building inspector is that drainage and stormwater will will not be adversely impacted.
Right, and I I believe the planning board can acknowledge that the applicant acknowledged the existence and location of the village storm sewer system and has stated she assumes responsibility for damage to the stormwater system that may be caused by the construction activities.
Okay, the next thing, trash management is not applicable. I think Mindy's comment for the, I guess, for watering storms or those are not impacted by this. So Mindy's comment would be applicable to the sewer pipe, the sorry, the storm sewer pipe.
Number ten.
I guess that would be a new one, right? Or would that be for number ten stormwater system?
Yeah, I would put that down as number sixteen personally, and I believe the planning board can acknowledge that based upon the opinions of the building inspector, the village engineer and the DPW that their, the proposed addition will not adversely that their, the proposed addition will not adversely impact drainage or the existing stormwater system.
Okay, I think that sounds good. Is everyone else okay with that? Okay, and then waste and snow removal are not applicable. And based on what we've heard, there are no concerns about health, safety and general welfare. And Steve, you're the fire marshal. Do you have any concerns?
None at all, none at all. And I mean, I still haven't got full final site plans, but obviously they, you know, I will, I will go through them before issuing a final building permit anyways.
Okay, so then if we scroll down. Basically, there's a statement here that we're going to leave the balance of application requirements because we're satisfied with this. And then there's conditions of approval. Is there any comments on leaving application requirements?
Not, not here.
No.
Okay, if that's, everyone's all right with that, then let's move on to the conditions of approval. Number one is going to go away because Steve has determined that it is not visible and not subject to a preservation board review. Number two, we usually put in there. And if the construction doesn't happen within a year or they don't get a building permit within a year, we, they can, the applicant can just apply to extend that from us and we would typically grant that as long as nothing substantial has changed. Then the other conditions of approval would be a review of construction plans by the village engineer and the public work superintendent. Is that what we're agreeing with?
Yes.
You're muted. I'm just looking for review, looking for approval of the construction plans.
Okay, so the condition would be approval of the construction plans by the village engineer and the public work superintendent.
Right, prior to issuance of a building, of a building permit.
Okay, prior to issuance of a building permit. Thank you, and I guess the names below would be updated. This was based when, I guess, when Justin Lightgood was on the board. So that would strike Justin Lightgood and replace it with Michael Reynolds. Are there any other conditions of approval you would recommend, Mindy?
No, I, I think, you know, as we discussed, it would be a good idea to refer to the trustees just for their information, but I don't think you need to make that a condition of approval.
Okay, Steve, is there any conditions of approval you would recommend?
I, I think you're pretty much covered it by the fact that it has to go through the DPW and the village engineer as long, and as well as mine reviews as a code officer and fire marshal.
All right, any other comments from the board members or are we ready to vote on this as discussed?
Justin, this is Dave Marshall going back to, I think, number one in this document. All the way back with regards to the comprehensive plan. I just wanted to reference section or policy framework of the comprehensive plan on page 31, C2 and C3. C2 states, inform residents and property owners of historic development standards and required approvals for redevelopment and investment. And C3 on page 31 is continue to enforce the villages' building and design standards and Secretary of Interior Standards in the zoning code and development review processes. So I just wanted to maybe cite that we're certainly in alignment with the comprehensive plan.
Could you just restate the, the second one that you were talking about, Dave? Because my recollection is that that had to do with construction or modifications in, in the historic district. And I, I know the entire village is in the historic district, but is that really something that we want to?
We don't need to. It is under the historical character and culture. So should we feel inappropriate to reference here, given the fact that it's off-street, off-site? I'm perfectly fine leaving it alone and leaving it out.
I would prefer that we not reference it.
Okay, very good.
You're okay with that?
I'm perfectly fine with that. Just wanted to reference that there were some, you know, potential citations. We'll leave that alone and move forward.
So we're striking both citations or just the second one?
Both.
Okay. We're in agreement with that. Any other comments from the board? Okay, with that said, I will make a motion to approve the resolution with the findings and changes discussed tonight. And that would approve the site plan for 20.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion or are we ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
Okay, how do you vote?
Dave Marshall, aye.
Mike Reynolds, aye.
Jan and aye.
Okay, Justin Bleepstra, aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you to the applicant for sticking with us and patiently explaining everything. It sounds like you are all set from us and your next step will be to apply for a building permit.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You guys as well. Thanks much.
Okay, I'd like to take a couple minute break here. I'm going to need to relocate. So can I make a motion to take like a five-minute break before we continue?
Okay.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye. Hey Dave, I have a question for you.
Yeah, I'll stick around.
Yeah, how did, how did you do the background, the way you got it?
Oh.
We had a motion on the floor here. You can discuss that over the break if you want.
Sorry, I thought you voted, sorry.
It sounded like you voted.
Aye.
All right, so Steve, if you go down to the bottom left where it says stop video. And then under, oh, I have a question for you, Steve. Yeah, you're, you're a participant. So under the bottom left, under stop video, click on the little arrow. And then underneath it, it says select camera. Choose virtual background.
Ah, awesome.
Now, in the virtual background, there are a number of things that are sort of predetermined there, right? So I could put up my random Minotaur statue, should you find that interesting? Or a, whatever that is. Or an old, you know, revolutionary wagon. But you have to, you have to save these photos into a location on your computer and then if, within that little window underneath you, you may see some like virtual backgrounds and video filters. But there's a little plus mark over to the right that says add image or video.
Awesome.
And then from there, so this is my Dungeons and Dragons character.
Yeah, that's the first one I saw earlier that you.
Yeah, yeah, that, right? We won't get into specifics. But this is the, oh. Total joke. I just thought it was the background. Sorry, but all due respect, my apologies, mayor. Do appreciate your time. That was a total internal joke, but this, this background here, that's what I thought it was. This is, it was just an image I grabbed offline and, and saved it.
That's awesome, thank you. Because I saw the first original one, you had your Dungeons and Dragons and then you changed it. I'm like, how the heck did you do that?
Yeah, yeah, so it's nice because otherwise you get this, which is my basement office.
Well, that's, I got the back wall of my kitchen, so it's.
Yeah, right, right. This looks much nicer.
Yes, it does. It's very, very professional looking.
I like the lack of uniformity of design.
Thank you.
We'll see you guys in a few minutes.
And bomb, they have no pictures on this computer.
Okay, I've returned. I've had to relocate a little bit. Looks like not everybody's returning yet. Dave, are you around? Wasn't sure if Dave is moving so slowly became part of his background. Okay, is everybody set to resume? Okay, thank you. All right, I'll make a motion to reconvene the meeting.
Second.
Are you vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the next one on the agenda is 42 Monroe Avenue, which is in addition to their garage. Now, we heard from the applicant last time and I believe nothing has changed since last time. I don't know if the applicant is on board. But when we discussed this last week, the, what we had heard were no concerns from anybody. And we were just waiting to go over our resolution and findings, which we deferred to our meeting this week. So I believe that is where we left off. Let me just ask Steve though. Steve, nothing has changed since last week, is that correct?
Correct. He did, he did, Justin.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we did get updated drawings and, and show the one light on the, at the door entry that's behind the garage, kind of buried around the backside of the garage for the you asked about the lighting and it showed on the print that it's 75 watt and under 3,000 Calvin.
Okay, so the lighting fixture complies with code is, and you have no concerns, is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. And I also recall, we discussed drainage last time. We can put this in our findings, but my recollection was the downspouts are in the back going towards the canal. And the statements I recall hearing in the last meeting was that the slope of the land was away from it and away from adjacent properties and this, Steve, correct us if I'm wrong, but you had, you had no concerns about drainage when we reviewed this before.
Correct. The lay of the land directs all the water to the rear of the property and not onto any neighboring properties.
Okay, well, I think then we can, first of all, Marina, do you have the other resolution open?
What other resolution is that?
I afford you two, I believe.
I only saw one in the zip file that you sent.
Zip file.
Oh wait. It will not, it hit it on me, but it won't let me open it. Let me see. Yeah, it won't let me have that second one.
I sent it to you again.
Okay.
See if that works. See if that works.
I don't, I'm opening it and it's coming up blank. I don't know exactly what what's going on with it. But I'm receiving, oops, sorry. I was gonna show you what's happening. Because I received it.
I've seen that with our email system before where it screws up Word documents sometimes.
Yeah, and it's, it comes up here, but when I go to open it, it comes up as a blank document.
Absolutely. I've seen that happen before. Well, let's just go through our template. Can try forwarding it to you another time. But basically it just stuck in the applicant's name and address. And we can just go through that.
No problem. I can take care of, I'm typing this down, so I'll take care of that later on.
Okay, so we'll fill in the applicant name and address and action and the meeting dates and time subsequently. So if we scroll down. Again, they, this is a type two action and seeker, and I think the citation is 617-5C12. That's what Mindy stated previously. And this one for Monroe County Planning, this, we discussed this with Steve and this would be item C. This is a, the review is for a site plan for a residential accessory structure, which is exempt from county planning review per our agreement with them.
Correct.
So under C, instead of minor site plans, write that and replace it with residential site plan for an accessory structure. And then number three, under the waterfront consistency review. It's item B there, which is a take two action and seeker. And I believe this does not require any approvals from state or county agencies. Is that correct, Steve? Steve is muted, but it looked like he said that's correct. All right, so Steve, the next one is on you if you can unmute yourself.
Got it. I, I lost you for a minute there. No, you were correct on the last one, Justin.
Okay, so this one again, is it your determination that this does not create any zoning violations?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. For number two here. Presumably be the same finding as we made for the last application, which is it's a residential structure and there are no concerns. I believe that's effectively what we said.
The only difference here being that it is visible from the street and so any of those historical code requirements or planning objectives would apply.
Correct. This will be heard by the HPB on October 19th.
Okay, so the finding here is this is a residential structure and it's going to be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Board. And we have no concerns on compliance with the comprehensive plan or LWRP.
Correct.
Okay. Number three, I believe there's no change to the driveway traffic or circulation.
Concur.
Correct.
Same thing with number four.
Change.
Now, I believe all the adjacent uses are residential. So, so again, the, this project is a residential structure and the adjacent properties are also residential.
Yes, that's how I understand it as well, Justin.
All right, number six. I believe there's no change to parking.
Huh?
I would actually say it enhances. Having a garage enhances the availability of off-street parking.
Well, this is the one that's the addition to the garage. So the garage already exists.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you very much. You're right.
So the driveway is remaining unchanged and off-street parking is unchanged and adequate. You believe that that off-street parking is unchanged and adequate?
Yeah.
Landscaping, I think we typically say the site is already landscaped and landscaping is adequate.
Yes, it would be enhanced if anything, but again, it's not visible from the street.
So the statement is basically land, it's already landscaping and changes will enhance the appearance. Okay?
Yes.
Number eight is not applicable. Number nine, we already had a comment from Steve. That the lighting is compliant with code and complies with building code, I believe, to address safety concerns. Is that correct, Steve?
Correct, correct. And the lighting that is proposed will not be, cannot and will not be seen from any adjacent properties.
Thank you. And Steve previously made comments on drainage and stormwater that I think we can put in here. In summary, it's not going to impact other properties and drains away from other properties. Number 11, water and sewers are unchanged. Except for, I believe there's new utility lines running to the garage.
That's my understanding as well. They don't exist currently.
And, but that's not a dwelling. I don't think we, I don't think there's any concern on our part whether water works or not to a garage.
Any has a comment?
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna ask that when we update this form, that we correct the spelling of sewer in number 11.
That sounds like a good idea. Okay, so finding for 11, what's the summary for that? I guess we could just say it's adequate.
Yeah, adequate and sufficient, no change.
Number 12 is, I believe, not applicable.
Correct.
Number 13 is not applicable.
Correct.
And number 14, I think, is we had no concerns.
Correct.
Steve, as fire marshal, do you have any official comments?
I know, same as the last application. I will be reviewing the, what we have right now is, are not permit documents. They are, they will need to submit a full set of permit documents to be fully reviewed prior to issuing any building permit for this project.
So you have no concerns about the site plan and it's subject to further review when you receive construction drawings?
Correct.
Thank you, Steve. I don't think there are any other findings are needed for this. Does there any other comments from the board?
I have none.
Move. Any concerns about waiving, remaining application requirements?
No.
Not here.
No.
Okay. These are standard, a couple standard conditions we have. I don't see the need to add any other conditions. Anyone else?
I do not.
No.
And then further below under the board members, we would strike Justin Leggib and replace that with Michael Reynolds. So unless there's any further comments, I, I'll just go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution with findings as discussed tonight and changes as discussed tonight.
Second. Dave Marshall.
Okay, how do you vote?
Dave Marshall, aye.
Mike, aye.
Susan Lota, aye.
Jane Chan, an aye.
And Justin Bleepstra, aye. I would add that we should make sure we cite the date of the drawings in this resolution and the last resolution.
Good idea.
Okay, that's it for applications, I believe. So I believe we're all done with that. The only other question I had, there's nothing else on the agenda, but Mindy, I didn't know if you had any updates for us regarding the Canal Corporation issue? And if we should do that in a privileged session or schedule one thing in your time?
Um, yes, I have updates and if you want to do an attorney-client session after the public meeting is over, I can circulate a WebEx or do whatever you like.
You mean have it tonight or another night? Is that what you're asking about?
Either is fine with me, but it would need to be in a close, in an attorney-client session that's not open to the public.
Okay, Marina, do we have the ability to do a breakout session here?
Yeah, I think I can do that. Give me just a second.
Okay, so before we do that, is there any other matters any members would like to discuss?
Um.
I'm good.
Steve?
I just want to say I don't think you need me anymore. I do want to say thank you for your diligence and, and your understanding and working with the applicants and moving things forward. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign off for tonight and finish staining my door, which I've been doing while we've been doing this. All right, and I will sign off as well. Thank you all very much.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Mike, you're signing off for, okay. So all right, if we can kick off a breakout session to talk to our attorney or our attorney. I believe we would have to adjourn the meeting first, correct, Mindy?
Yeah, I don't, I think that it has been turned off through Dorothea's settings. So, because it would be right along my bottom panel and I'm not seeing it. So I don't think I can break out for you.
It's still being recorded, though. We can't do an attorney-client session in a recorded session, in a recorded meeting.
All right. You're able to send out a link that we can join.
I'll do that right now. Yeah.
Is everyone able to work with that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
My only other comment was to Marina. Marina, if you could post the link to our last meeting on the website, it's up at YouTube, but it's not on the website for the PCBA reported meetings.
Okay, I'll make sure that's updated tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
And the other thing is, I believe, we, if we can post a draft of the resolutions when those are available and forward that around to all board members for comments.
And me too.
Yep, and me too, yep.
Okay, I'm gonna sign out and invite you all to a WebEx. Bye bye.
Oh wait, do we have to formally close the meeting?
Please, yes.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting, the public meeting.
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, Marina.